I'm going to call the meeting to order. Steve Manley is right here. In accordance with the State Sunshine Law, additive notice of this meeting was provided by mailing notice of meeting on January 6, 2021, and September 24, 2021. Notice was provided to Board of Education members, Montgomery Township Clerk, Rocky Hill Earl Clerk, Public Library Township Posting, School Posting, PTSA Officers, Courier News, Montgomery News, Princeton Packet, Trent Times, and The Star Ledger. The Board reserves the right to enter into executive session during all meetings of the Board of Education. Can we have a roll call?
Ms. Herman?
Present.
Ms. Harris?
Here.
Mr. Morath?
Mr. Speck?
Here.
Ms. Spence Wallace?
Present.
Mr. Tawari?
Here.
Mr. Todd?
Here.
Dr. Ebert?
Here.
Ms. Burge?
Present.
It is recommended that the Board of Education adopt a resolution to convene an executive session as follows. Whereas the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 20, 231 of the laws of 1975, provides that a public body may exclude the public from that portion of a meeting of which the public body discusses certain matters for which confidentiality is required as permitted in Section 7B of the Act. Whereas the items that are permitted to be discussed in executive session as are followed, we will be discussing 4, 7, and 8. 4 is a collective bargaining agreement and/or negotiations related to it. 7 is pending or anticipated litigation or contract negotiations and/or matters of returning client privilege. And 8, specific perspective or current employees unless all who can be adversely affected request an open session. Action may take place on these items. The matters discussed in executive session shall be disclosed to the public when the need for confidentiality no longer exists. May I have a motion to move to executive session?
A vote.
Second.
All is in favor?
Aye.
We now move on to executive session. Thank you. Start off with a roll call.
Ms. Herman?
Present.
Ms. Harris?
Here.
Mr. Morath?
Mr. Speck?
Here.
Ms. Spence Wallace?
Present.
Mr. Tawari?
Here.
Mr. Todd?
Here.
Dr. Ebert?
Here.
Ms. Burge?
Present.
We have a forum.
Thank you. All right, next, we'll salute the flag.
(Inaudible) United States of America, in this republic of righteous citizens, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So I guess I want to say thank you all for coming to our first meeting back at UMS. It's exciting to see people's faces now. So we will start with a superintendent.
Good evening. Before I begin, I would like to introduce our Board of Education high school students, Anya Sharma and Joyce Webb. Welcome, Anya.
Anya, would you like to speak for a moment?
Sure, my name is Anya. My name is Anya, and I'm a senior Montgomery High School. I've joined, I applied to be part of student council and the Board of Education represented because I believe the presence of voices oftentimes aren't heard at some high school, and especially in a year as difficult as the last one. I want to make sure that the communication from the high school students to the Board of Education is clear and direct so they can be represented and their opinions can be heard. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Joyce, I'm also senior. I applied for most of the reasons Anya did. I wanted to give students a voice. I've been working with the PTSA, I worked with something called the Youth Council. I found it so much more, you know, real life and applicable than some of the debate clubs I do at school. I fell in love with the aspect of public service, and there's so much more we can do than just sit in a stucking room and debate. There's things that can get done, and I feel like students have the capability to do that.
Thank you. Do you have an update from the high school? How's the first couple of weeks been going?
Sure, so those first couple of weeks have been honestly pretty smooth in terms of COVID, people are wearing their masks, you know. Lunch seemed difficult to a lot of people in the beginning, but I think that people are getting used to it now. The one part that I have heard a lot of feedback on, I personally do not get school lunch, but I've heard a lot of feedback back from it about how it's like not really satiable for a lot of students, and it's not really enjoyable for them to eat a very much.
Yeah, just to keep that off of that, on the subject of lunch, I am someone who gets school lunch every day because, you know, my mom's, you know, hard worker, and I don't want her to make sandwiches at 6:00 AM. So for me, the biggest part was like differentiating what I can eat and what I can't eat. For kids with allergies, it's very hard to see what is, you know, palatable for them. And for a lot of kids with, you know, food allergies, it could be potentially harmful if there's something that's in there that they don't know about. So that's just what I have to say about the lunch program.
Yeah, so Student Council, in terms of that, had its first meeting today. We're also pretty great, so we're still coming and stuff like that. That's pretty basic, you know, more of a school club than a Board of Education thing.
Thank you. You're welcome. So I prepared a little bit of this statement. Many of you are here to express your dissatisfaction with food we have been providing for lunch to our students across the district. There is no excuse to have served food that precipitated the numerous emails and complaints the district has received. I have met with central office and building administrators, as well as management from our food service provider, Chartwell's, to discuss the need to make improvements for our lunches. Improvements that include serving food that children will enjoy. I have arranged for Mr. Jim Gillespie, District Manager from Chartwell's, to be here tonight to share the plan moving forward on how we are committed to improving our lunch options throughout the district. I would like to provide a little background to why we have not introduced hot lunch today as other districts have. As the safety of our students is a priority in the district, our mitigation efforts aligned with the CDC and the Montgomery Health Department guidelines have created some specific challenges in regard to serving lunches and breakfasts in our schools. As the month of September comes to a close, we are able to pause and reflect upon our successes and some of our challenges in regard to food service. Up to this point in time, we have navigated the necessary mitigation efforts and provided cold lunch and breakfast options safely without the need to roll back on our efforts. Providing a stable foundation where we do not need to backpedal is one of our paramount concerns as we reestablish the sense of safety that is necessary for both our students and staff as we operate under these new circumstances. As we complete the first month of school, we are now able to introduce some hot lunch options, and we will offer grab-and-go hot lunch sandwiches options in addition to our cold sandwiches and vegetarian options. At the high school, students will process through the serving area where they will grab entrees first and then accompany sides and milk. Students will be masked while in the service area and will move quickly through the area, grabbing their items and exiting. Unlike previous years, there will be no long lines and wait times as students are not currently paying for lunches. The elimination of a checkout line allows for minimal student contact. Students are masked and in contact for less than 15 minutes, which does not necessitate contact tracing. This is similar to passing time in the hallways. Another topic tonight that I know is of concern is the mask wearing during the school day. We hear and understand your concerns with having your children wear masks for the most of the day. However, the school district is following the Governor's Executive Order 251 that mandates the wearing of face coverings by all in the school. I would now like to introduce Mr. Jim Gillespie, Regional Manager from Chartwell's.
And also Patty.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
That's okay, that's okay.
Okay, thank you very much for the opportunity this evening to explain what's been happening in food service. Again, my name is Jim Gillespie. I've been with Chartwell's for about 20 years, and I've been affiliated with this school district since, I believe, 2003. With me is Patty Karcheski, she's your onsite food service manager. I am responsible for 14 school districts within South Jersey. So just to give you an update on where we're at right now and how we got to where we're at today. In June of this past year was decided that Montgomery School District would go onto the SSO, or Summer Feeding Program, Summer Seamless, Seamless Summer Feeding Program, for the 21-22 school year. This would provide all students in the district with a free breakfast and a free lunch, where some schools in the state of New Jersey are only offering a free lunch and a district care outfit to serve breakfast and lunch. As a matter of fact, I'm only aware of one other district within my area that has not gone on the SSO program and is not on the National School Lunch Program. So as of today, also, Chartwell's is working with the building administrators to ensure that all children are afforded their free meals, including feeding in classrooms, off of makeshift serving lines in hallways, and makeshift tables in the cafeteria. As of this morning, this afternoon, we are 12 days into meal service. Day one, we served deli sandwiches. Day three, we added vegetarian options. Day nine, salad options. And day 10, we offered protein salad options. To date, we've served over 33,000 meals in the district. Roughly the same number of meals served in the same period in September of 2019. We did this with 20 food service employees, including Patty, your food service director, and you also have a salaried chef on premise. In September 2019, when we served 33,000 meals, we had 40 employees and an additional two salaried managers at that time. So essentially, we're serving the same amount of food with half the manpower. As you all know, we are battling a nationwide labor shortage. Local restaurants, chains, distributors, delivery companies, manufacturing companies have all been impacted. This morning, I heard on the news that Ford Motor Company reported they were 20% short of their nationwide workforce. So it's been, it's something that the entire country is experiencing. In an effort to recruit and to maintain the staff that we already have, Chartwell's is contributing $6,500 in signing bonuses for newly hired employees and for returning employees. When we closed in June, we were planning on opening this past September with limited hot and cold lunch service. Menus were pre-planned and food oils were placed so we'd have all the food for opening. On August 18th, a meeting was held with the administration, including all school principals. The principals wanted to limit the menus to cold brown bag lunches. Principals were concerned and wanted to adhere to social distancing guidelines. In the third week of August, Chartwell's now had to shift gears and had to source more deli products to be able to switch over to all cold lunches. This was becoming increasingly difficult as all orders had already been placed in June. To start service at the beginning of September, we used, we started with commodity deli meats. And just so everybody understands what commodities are, commodities is not the black and white labeled yellow cheese that was out in the 70s and the 80s. Commodity products are actually the USDA partners with major manufacturers, and they make food specifically for food service in schools. Along with the commodity product, we were able to get some purchased product, all named brands such as Hormel, Block &amp; Barrel, and that would give us some time to bring in additional Boars Head lunch meat, which was our standard deli product prior to the pandemic. Unfortunately, it took us almost eight days to receive our Boars Head delivery with enough product to feed the entire district. I think mainly it's because of our purchasing power, because if anyone's been to major supermarket chains, especially those with premium delis, you'll see that the inventories are running low and very thin on selections. But we were able to get enough product in to feed the entire district, and we've been doing so ever since. As discussed, we suggested that the district open limited service areas to expand into hot food service. We think that this will address some of the concerns over the variety that's currently being offered. We are roughly two weeks in to food service, and we are already experiencing some major, major supply chain issues. We're being shorted on products, we're being shorted on deliveries, we have deliveries that are canceling, that are being postponed, and some scheduled for a day or two after our normal deliveries. Manufacturers are right now having a very difficult time keeping up with manufacturing levels. The food suppliers are also short on labor, from the people in the warehouse who pick and load the trucks to the drivers who deliver the orders. Just today, we were shorted on milk, and we've been cut to one milk delivery a week. This district does not set up, does not have facilities to accommodate that. However, we were able to move some milk around in the district, and all the elementary schools were served milk product this morning, and the secondary schools were given cheese sticks and juice to supplement the milk shortage. We have to constantly adjust menus and production to keep up with product shortages, and that's a lot of times why the posted menu may not match what's actually being served because the truck that came in this morning didn't have the product on the truck, and we have to do whatever we have to do to get food out to the students. I can tell you that the Chartwell's team on the ground in Montgomery School District is doing the best that they can do to meet the needs of the students and the community of Montgomery. There are many daily struggles and opportunities and behind-the-scenes solutions taking place to ensure our students receive nutritious meals every day. I also brought with me a couple of photographs that I actually went through the district and took yesterday. Up in the upper left-hand corner, the quantity of the food that we're bringing in, that's a pallet of apples, that's just for the high school. That's about a three-and-a-half, four-day supply. It's 2,200 apples. I reference the fact that we were using Hormel and Block &amp; Barrel products. There are the products we had when we first opened, beginning of the school year. And all the way to the right, that's our Boars Head product which came in beginning of last week, and we actually got replenished again today.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow, sorry. This is the commodity product I referenced. Please take note of what I circled in red. That was produced by Tyson Foods. Okay, that is the USDA contracts with Tyson to make specific products for schools. And that was used at the beginning of the school year until we could replenish what we needed. Again, these are pictures right in the freezer. As I said, we were stockpiled and ready to go with hot food selections from the very start of the school year. Pictures of the store room, again, to show that we're not buying the cheapest brown box products out there. These are just candid photographs, walked in the store room, snapped a few pictures. That's a picture of the school lunch. That one in particular was at the high school, where we're serving the exact same lunch in all grade levels in the district as of right now. As referenced earlier in the meeting, we're suggesting that we open up limited service areas. This is a picture of the high school. This is how it would be laid out, where we'd be able to expand into hot food selections. At first, it would just most likely be a hot sandwich, and then on the opposite side of the hot sandwich would be a cold sandwich, and then the students would exit through the center, and you can see there's plenty of room for them to get in there and go out. Again, there are no checkout lines, there are no cash registers, there's no cash being taken, and there is no cash register point-of-sale system being used. And I did hear some concern about the allergies. Until we get the point-of-sale system back online, it's going to be extremely difficult for us to be able to monitor allergies with students. The way it worked before was if a student came through the line, they punched their ID card number into the system, their picture popped up on the screen, and it would flash whatever allergies they had would be on that screen, and we'd be able to say, okay, that student cannot have soy, cannot have milk, or whatever. Without a POS system and using a tally system, that's not possible. Again, just a few more pictures of the high school. And that's where we're at today. That's how we got here.
Thank you. Board members have any questions?
Jim and Alicia, can you talk about the cost of the food and how that works within the district, specifically for the SSO program?
I don't understand the cost.
The subsidies and the reimbursement.
Reimbursements. Reimbursable program.
Yeah, if we fulfill the guidelines, which is, when you saw that lunch up on the screen, that's what we call reimbursable lunch. And for that, the USDA reimburses the school district, I believe, $4.25 for a lunch, and that has to cover the food cost, the labor to produce it, the packaging, everything that goes with it. So the district is reimbursed by the USDA for all meals served. Chartwell's in turn purchase the food and then builds a district exactly what we spent on food. Thank you.
So a food service should be self-operational, so you should never have to dip into your operating budget to sustain a food service?
That's actually, that's correct, and it's a New Jersey regulation that all school food services must be completely self-sustained and cannot be supported by a general fund or by taxpayers. Yes?
I heard you said that it's to close monitor allergies until the point system comes back with the lunch codes. Then in that meantime, would you think it was wise if students took the initiative to put ingredients in anything, pieces of paper, and take them with one of the bags? Do you think that would be a useful way until?
It definitely sounds like a viable solution. I just, logistically, given the manpower we have right now and getting those labels out, I can't guarantee that that would happen overnight. We can try and work towards that. Sounds like a very good idea. Given the limited menu selections we have, it's definitely possible. At the very least, we could be able to post those things. Thank you for the suggestion.
Jim and Alicia, thank you for coming. There was an instance where there was a bad supply of milk. There was one particular batch. Do you want to share more on that?
Sure, we got a report. There was some milk that was out of code. So immediately, Pat had her staff check the entire inventory district lot, and out of the hundreds of cases of milk, which contain about 50 cartons each, we found four cartons in one case that were out of code. The rest of it still had 10 to 14 days left on. So we filed a complaint with the dairy, of course, and the district has reimbursed the cost of that milk.
While asking the question, because there is a strong likelihood of that happening again, and you're short on staff, is there any way we can help you so that you can do better quality control?
Well, I can either, there's no way for us to find four cartons out of 1,000 cartons of milk, and I don't know what resources it would take to do that. I can tell you that we're very careful in deliveries command. Just the other day when I was here and I reported to you, Alicia, we received a bread delivery, and as I walked through the door, Pat is having a meltdown, let's say, at least, because the bread that literally just came in the door was moldy, and that was for tomorrow's sandwiches. So immediately, she was on the phone with the entire district, all the kitchens together. That food was put aside, we filed a complaint, we called the bakery, the bread was replaced so we could stay on track. So I can tell you that we're doing everything we can right now, given the resources we have, and 99.9% of the time, I think we're going to find it. It's when something obscure like a few cartons of milk are going to slip by. We don't have a very expansive menu right now. We don't have a lot of products out there, so it's a lot easier for us to monitor what's happening with the limited products we have.
I just hope that they do.
I appreciate the opportunity. I appreciate the well wishes. Yes, ma'am?
Thank you. Sally Wallace, thank you so much, Mr. Gillespie and Patty. It's really nice to meet you. Thank you for joining us this evening. So I have several of these questions. You stated that back in June is when we were conversing with Alicia that the order for at least September, this place with all of your vendors or co-op, do you participate? Do we participate in co-op somewhere?
No.
No? Okay. Just vendors. Okay, vendors. So you, did you submit the Boars Head order at that time, and it's just, it's been a delay that hasn't been arrived until recently?
Well, we placed an order, but it was not for the amount of product we would need to feed the entire district. We bought that as a menu item to be offered along with the rest of the menu. When it became the sole product on the menu, we didn't have enough. And at that point, it was so late, Boars Head was experiencing shortages, and it was very difficult to get that inventory back up, and we had enough to feed the entire district.
So, I mean, and on average, how many staffing, you know, does Chartwell's currently have at the schools? Or is there a central kitchen location? Can you explain that to me, because I'm not sure?
Right now, we have 20 employees district lot in five schools. So we normally have 40.
40 total?
40 total, plus two managers, and two years ago, we actually had four managers here. So we're operating with half.
Okay, I'm always on that. Could you provide specificity on the hot sandwich or food options for the students in the various schools, and when will that actually begin?
Well, I believe we just agreed to offer those products, and I did ask the district to give me a few days to get organized and get the side products to go in with those items.
So is it Thursday?
At the high school, right?
Next Monday?
Starting at the high school. I would say today is Tuesday.
We could do Thursday at the high school. And we would have to start at the high school. You're going to start at the high school? Yes. And then, okay. I'd like to reach out to the principals and, you know, to see, because I know there's some issues with where the children are seated at Village Elementary and Orchard Hill, because their desks being three feet apart are butted right up against my serving line doors. My outdoor serving line is actually inside my kitchen right now, so they don't even have the ability to walk into the kitchen. And what are some of those options going to be so the families can?
Well, to start off, the number one product at the high school and the middle schools is chicken patties, chicken tenders, spicy chicken patties. They're the number one selling place. And pizza.
Okay.
It's chicken then pizza. But I will caution, especially with some high school students here, in the past, we were not on the National School Lunch Program, we're not on SSO. So when we cooked chicken tenders and french fries and all those things, they were cooked in fryolaters. And now, those, all those things have to be cooked in the oven because SSO has very, very strict guidelines. So when you bite into that sandwich, it's not going to be the same exact sandwich you had when we left. I can tell you that right now. It's the same product, it's just.
Thank you, Dr. Ebert. Thank you so much.
Just a quick clarification, that one here. Can you, you said that you have 14 school districts under your supervision.
Yes.
How is the staff shortage distributed across these different 14? Because, you know, you made reference to national shortage and then essentially saying you had 50% workforce. Now, how is it distributed in the district?
Well, right around the corner, I'm responsible for South.
Because, you know, you made reference to national shortage and then essentially saying you had 50% workforce. Now, how is it distributed in the district?
Well, right around the corner, I'm responsible for South Brunswick School District. We're operating with about half staff there. They typically have 80. We have 38 employees there. So we're running about half. In most districts, it could vary anywhere from half-staffed to missing 25% of staff. There is no place that I am responsible for in New Jersey that is completely staffed.
I'm sorry, thank you. So then, there are multiple food service contractors available to school districts throughout the state of New Jersey. Are you finding that, and you stated that you oversee about 20 or so districts in South Jersey, are you finding that your company, Chartwells, is experiencing this delay? Because I know, I work in a public school district in Union County. And our food service contractor, and I won't state who they are, is not experiencing those types of delays. So can you kind of share with us, is this a new pattern as a result of the pandemic where inventories, you know, have been compromised, you know, across various commodities or what have you? Or is this unique to Chartwells right now? Like, could you talk to us a little bit about that?
Sure. It is definitely all related to the pandemic. And I can't speak to other companies specifically, but I can tell you, and I do know this for a fact because I've worked for the other companies as well, we're all buying from the same manufacturers. We're all buying Tyson Chicken or Purdue Chicken. And they're all having the same problems. We're buying from the same dairies. There's only so many dairies in the state of New Jersey. We're all having the same shortage issues. So again, I can't speak specifically to what's happening in Union, but I can tell you that it's not just a Chartwells issue.
Union County.
Union County, I'm sorry. But I can tell you that we're, we as an industry are experiencing shortages, not just in New Jersey, but across the country.
Before we keep going, I guess I want to make sure, can everyone here, because I always have that problem with that. Can you hear, can I make sure every board member talks?
Sorry, I heard you.
Thank you, Mr. Gillespie. Thank you so much.
Hi, thanks, Jim and Patty, for coming tonight. So I have a question about procurement guidelines. I'm not familiar, obviously, with how you procure your food. I'm just curious, are you allowed to purchase, say, apples? Like, I saw the pallet of apples from local farms. The reason I ask, we got an email today from a parent talking about the apple was very bruised, short of the rind. So I can imagine why that could be in a large pallet like that, buried in the bottom of those boxes. Are we, are you allowed to purchase from local farms?
All food that's served in schools has to be USDA inspected. It has to go through a USDA inspected process and plant. I can tell you, and I can provide a list to the district, that the people that we're buying from, our distributors, are buying from local farmers in the state of New Jersey when product is in season. So just because we're not buying from the farm down the street doesn't mean we're not getting their apples. We could be getting their apples after they've been processed and sent to an inspection plant, and then sent to the distributor, and then sent to us. So they made a 100-mile trek to go a mile down the road.
One of the concerns I've heard is maybe particularly the high school, sizes of portions is reduced or different. And is there anything you can say about that?
That's absolutely true. The portions are slightly smaller than what we've served in the past. And that's because the SSO guidelines, very strict guidelines on portion sizes, the amount of total calories, the weight of the meat on a sandwich is all regulated by SSO guidelines, which we have to follow to ensure that the district gets their reimbursements because we are audited by the state.
All right, I have a few questions. I guess, I know you said you can't really deal with a lot of the, you know, the allergic stuff right now. But if somebody is allergic to something, can they approach you all and ask for something else?
Absolutely.
Right, so if you are allergic to milk, which I am, I would be able to find something else.
Absolutely.
But it can't be water. That's.
That's correct.
Right, okay. So.
Can I just clarify that? Because that's a very, very common question. A lot of people ask us, I don't like milk. I'm allergic to milk. Can I just have a water? It probably costs you less just to give me the water. The USDA considers water a food of zero nutritional value and cannot be considered part of a reimbursable meal program. So as a technicality, you're correct. You cannot serve or offer water.
Now, I was told, I know that they're smaller amounts, but we do give different amounts based on school, right? The younger kids get a lesser amount. And, you know, the high school kids get more, a larger amount of food, right, than.
There is a slight difference. And the main difference is in the vegetable and fruit portioning. Now, what we package is the minimum requirement for fruits and vegetables. But at the high school and the middle schools, we put out additional vegetables and fruits. So if a student wants to take an additional apple or additional vegetable, which lately has been carrot sticks or celery sticks, they're entitled to take that. And it's out there for the taking.
So why, I guess I'm wondering, can we do that for the other schools too? Because if they're, you know, younger kids that maybe can't eat some of the stuff, maybe, you know, if they can get two vegetables or two fruits, can we put that out for them as well?
We can offer it if you'd like to, but that's not an entitlement in the SSO program.
My understanding is you can get two fruits for one, right? And you can get two vegetables for one.
That's correct.
And you're not, you're not giving all of that, are you, in your minimum bag?
In the elementary schools, they're getting the full required amount, which I'm not sure exactly what is it. I believe it's a.
It's a cup of fruit.
A cup is.
Re-raise the vegetables.
Right.
So it is two types of vegetables and two types of.
It can be two different types as long as the total weight is the same, or one vegetable's weight is the same. So yes, in the elementary schools, if you'd like us to offer more, we can. It's not required by SSO, but we can do it.
Can I jump in real quick? The elementary schools are a little tougher to do that. We can do it at UMS, and we can do it at the high school. The elementary schools, breakfast is fed in the classroom. We actually take the meals that are prepared, which is completely reimbursable. They go into a bin. When the teachers come in in the morning, or the aides at Lower Middle, they pick up that bin and deliver it to the classroom. So I don't know how I would incorporate adding extra because, you know, some product comes back to us, some doesn't. The same with lunch. We're putting them in the bins for Orchard and Village. Lower Middle School, they're being placed on a table. We could put it out there as well. You know, I don't know who's picking up. So the elementary schools, that would be a little tough. Let me go back to my first question. One of our board members, I think it is Rich, was kind enough to share with us an article from the New York Times, is that right? Today, which talked about the fact that the Department of Agriculture has, I guess, lessen their rules or to allow more things to be done rather than what is traditionally done and/or purchased and, you know, under the federal guidelines, right? So I guess I'm asking if you would be willing to make some creative decisions if that helps us to find the right products that you need? I know that now that you're expanding to hot foods, you may not need this as much. But are you willing to make some of those creative decisions if we ask to either, you know, the example that we're in the New York Times was, you know, some places are going to Costco if they don't have enough of, like, the bread or whatever that is needed for feeding all the kids that day. Would you consider something like that?
Of course we would. And the situation you just described is something we've actually done. I mean, we're shorted product, and we've, Patty has a credit card issued by the company, and she has to go to ShopRite and buy food to make it through a lunch. So we're doing those types of things. It's not ideal because it doesn't go through the proper channels, proper supply chain. You can't guarantee that. So it's a rare thing that we do, but we do do it. I'm not familiar with the exact guidelines that were handed down. I did hear that they came down today. And it'll probably take a week to 10 days for it to be interpreted by Chartwells Corporate and the New Jersey state workers, which they will definitely inform us and mandate what we do next.
Mr. Gillespie, also, I'm sorry, Mr. Gillespie, they did send out the flexibility of those waivers and congregate setting, no serving. So those are available for you. I know, I think it was about seven to 10 days ago, there was an update to the flexibility on the waivers at the federal level. They issued that to all the states.
And as of right now, the district is up to date with the waivers that are currently available.
All right, also, there is a chance to be flexible about workers, too. I know that we had parents that had offered to volunteer. And I did check with the state, and they said that we could do things like that as well to help you all. Would you be willing to allow, you know, different types of workers so that we could supplement, you know, the people that you have?
Absolutely. If the district is going to supply us with volunteers, we have had other districts with a limited number of volunteers that helped package lunches for us. So yes, absolutely. We would welcome any help we can get because right now, the staff is pushed to their absolute limits.
So we've gotten some letters that have said, you know, South Brunswick is better than us in terms of what they're supplying. So I'm assuming it's because they're getting hot food and we aren't. Is that correct?
I spent six or seven days in South Brunswick making pizza. So yes, they started with a much more diverse menu than we're offering here. They may not be following the exact protocols for distancing. They do offer five or six hot items every day for lunch, plus cold selections. So yes, they have a very diverse menu there.
I, I guess this is really for the board. I was thinking, I know this is out of the box, that maybe we might consider donating water, you know, to the different schools so the kids can just pick up water rather than, you know, not have it available. So I'm hoping you all consider that in the future. We can talk about it later. I also asked the state, because I guess I'm a little pushy, that if we could also, if need be, we could use restaurants if we need to, to help provide food. They're going to check on that, you know. But would that be something you consider if we were able to fit that to happen?
That is a very slippery slope. That opens up serious liability issues. When we can't guarantee the source of the food for how it was produced or if it meets nutritional guidelines. If that's something the district wants to pursue, we could look into it. I can tell you that I strongly recommend, but we don't do that.
Okay, thank you. I guess my last question is, I wasn't sure I heard how long it will take to get hot food at, like, Orchard Hill.
I can't answer that because we have to meet with the principals. We have to, I mean, the decision was just made to put the hot food in the high school in the last 24 hours. So we have to meet with the principals to see what can be done to open up service areas to facilitate that. So it's going to make, we can get the hot food. We have enough to get started. It's just, I need to know how we're going to facilitate that.
So I've learned that some schools are actually letting kids make their orders for what they're going to have at lunch. And those foods are actually put on the table where they sit so that you don't have to go through the lines and you don't have, like, that three-foot problem. Is that something you'd consider if we could figure out how to do that?
We have some schools that do pre-orders like that. But they also have a large staff of lunch aides. And teachers are involved, and they're distributing those meals. I do not have the staff for that. I don't foresee having the staff for that anytime in the near future by giving our recruiting efforts. Pre-orders are definitely a possibility, but putting them on students' tables and things like that would take a considerable amount of manpower. And very feasible in smaller schools, in neighborhood schools. I don't know that it would work here. We could explore it.
All right, a constant question we have gotten or comment we've gotten in our letters is that the quality of the food is not at the level that the parents want or the students, right, they aren't willing to eat it. And I think I asked you this question before. If we desire and we want you to take, to purchase a higher level, I know you consider the level that you purchase right now to be quality. But if we requested that you select a higher level of food, would you be willing to do that for us in our process? You know, for the food?
If you're looking for a higher level of food from Borsehead Deli meats, Tyson Chicken, Purdue Chicken, things like that, we can definitely go that route. It'll be additional cost to the district. Again, so everyone's familiar. The district pays Chartwell.
It's available, Jim, right?
It's absolutely available. It's absolutely available. And we can provide it, but it will be, the district has Chartwells as a liaison to purchase the food for you. So we'll purchase anything you want. You're only going to get the same reimbursement from the government. So the money you generate, the profits that you generate, are the district's, not Chartwells'. We work for a fee. So whatever you want us to do as far from a quality standpoint, we can do it. If you want me to serve filet mignon and trim cocktail, I can do that. I can do that.
Okay, so it would just lessen our profit, is what you're saying, if we got a higher quality?
Exactly. I can do whatever you ask us to do from a food standpoint.
So are there any other questions from the board?
Just one related to that. I guess I'm wondering, you know, we've seen and pictures that parents have taken or kids have taken and discussion about that. Now, some of that's anecdotal. Some of it may have been from a week ago. And as she said, you're making changes along the way. But I'm wondering, to Phyllis's question, how much of issues that you think might be happening still are from a product perspective or is it more of a process? We're talking about how meals have to be reheated once you get the heating. Is there anything that you think is just because of the district's required COVID spacing and just the difficulty you have getting product in and turning it around and getting things set up? I'm just trying to understand the balance between product issue versus process issue.
Are you referring to the quality of food or the quantity of food?
I'm talking about, I guess, the end product. If people are saying that they're getting things that are cold, well, I guess everything is cold now, but like, it's frozen or, you know, it's not thawed out type of thing, or other types of things. It seems like you think that that is.
I don't know that we're experiencing very many of those issues. When those issues are brought to our attention, like the out-of-date milk, that was something we immediately took care of. So we need to be made aware of those things. As long as someone brings it to the supervisor's attention in the school building, it only takes minutes before Patty's on top of that.
True. I was, I have one more question. I know you, I can't remember what you call it, Patty, but you try to take advantage of using everything again if it's possible. Shelf-stable. Right, I'm sorry, what? Shelf-stable. Shelf-stable, right. So you try that, but there are times, other things that you can't do.
I think Phyllis is referring to the recovery plan. I'm sorry.
Recovery program.
Right, if there's something that's not used and we bring it back, we will reuse it. Mine is the milk because I have an issue with the temperature that it's been out because of the teachers' late picking that up and then it doesn't get distributed in the classroom in a timely manner. That makes me really nervous, so I will not reuse that. So I know there are COVID issues, but would you be willing to work with, what is Ellen's last name? Robbins, from. From the Rexxel, yes. From the pantry to. From the pantry to see if we can set up bins and situations where kids can donate stuff? Would you be willing to work with our, if we found ways of using the food that you aren't going to be able to reuse yourself?
We can do that as long as the district assumes responsibility because we have no control over what happens to the product when it leaves our control.
Right, okay.
So that would be a district liability issue. And whatever you do with product once it leaves our care is entirely up to the district.
Thank you. All right, so I'm going to ask people in the audience if they'd like to ask questions, but we're kind of, I was trying to figure out what to do with the microphones. What? I can't pull them off.
They can crash the microphone.
Can we actually?
She's going to love seeing Patty step back and the parents.
Okay, or either we can take one of the microphones to begin. Why don't you take that microphone by and then crash her phone?
Thank you for all the information. I really appreciate it. This is my first meeting. My name is Mohammed Al Sariah. I have two students here, one is a senior and my daughter, she's in a normal school. As we had kids, children representative, you heard exactly, that's basically the viewpoint from all students, including my two. So just a couple of things. Point is this, do you have a quality control? For example, like, as you say, so all parents concerned and most concerned, does anybody test the food? I know you said all the brand names, that's one thing. Does anybody quality check the test food before being served? That doesn't have to be every day, but time to time because my complaint that I'm listening from my children and my neighbors around the same thing, it's just, you know, Phyllis just said, the quality is not. As a result, you know what is happening? My daughter told me, I mean, she's saying that kids are throwing foods away. They're taking the bag, throwing away. And I asked her, what is going on? She said, either same thing being served and, as you said, rotten apples, things are not checked. Second, I saw my daughter saying nutritional fact of the food. She goes there, she says, either we get sugar-loaded stuff or grease-loaded stuff. For example, today, I think in the normal schools, they offer muffin loaded with greasy, greasy. The other day, she had a cow, you know, breakfast bar, all sugar item. Is there a way you guys assess the quality nutritional values of the food, just like as I concern about children, as you concern about children, I'm sure you, I really appreciate all your service? Is there where you guys have some sort of quality maintain process or some way you can validate that? Check the food, check the nutritional contents from the child perspective as we have a concern, the portion for high school and middle school. Third one is the, you know, the turning the food around, not serving, like, even as an adult, we can have same food every day. So this, I have three just points to you guys. Thank you.
As far as the nutritional value of the food is concerned, everything that's served in this menu in this district meets strict USDA guidelines. The muffin you're referring to is a low-fat muffin. We're not allowed to serve regular muffins. The cereals that we serve are, the limited amount of cereals we serve are all low-sugar cereals. The protein bars meet nutritional guidelines. That's what's available to us. As far as quality control, we are making the sandwiches fresh every day. We barely have enough staff to get the lunch ready on time. And yes, they're monitoring that product. Our staff normally eats lunch in our schools as well. So yes, they are monitoring the product. And as I pointed out to you before, when we do see an issue, like with the delivery of faulty product, it's something we address immediately. Yes, we have people checking the quality of the food on a regular basis. Now, as far as the variety in the menu, I have to agree. I don't think that deli sandwiches and the salad and the very limited cold items that we've been offering are the variety I'd like to offer, but it's what we can do to get a lunch prepared in front of the students in a very limited amount of time. Some of the schools only have 15-minute lunch periods. So we're very limited on what we can do in a very short period of time. So as we expand and we can open up some of the service areas, we hope to definitely address that. Thank you.
Can the next person come up, because I might?
Can you probably have a few on a queue so that we know who's?
They're raising their hands.
Yeah, okay. Can I get you to say your name? I forgot right now.
Yeah, so I'm Tina G. I have three kids in the district. I want to say thank you for your time today and for all the complaints. I do appreciate, you know, what you guys are trying to do despite all the constraints. So I don't know if some of the parents agree. We do, you know, appreciate what you have been doing. I know there's a lot of improvement that can be made. Just a suggestion, and I'm sure there's still a lot of questions and concerns, especially from a parent, that we're not going to have time to. I don't know if you guys want to consider developing a focus group or a committee for the rest of the school year to address any other issues that might come about. Might be a little bit more effective and, you know, just, you know, worth our time because I'm sure we can't get to all the questions at the board meetings. But again, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, please, come on up whoever's.
My name is Lily. I have two kids attending Orchard and Village. This is actually my first board meeting, so certainly food is our priority. So first, I want to again thank the board for taking action, holding this meeting so quick so we can actually address some concerns. And I appreciate you coming here to answer and also explain the food shortage, some restriction regarding the safety. However, I do have two questions. My first question is both for Chartwell and the board, is about the expired food. It's not just about the food, the milk that's out of the date. I also see the carrots that has a package that has been out of the date. And my biggest concern is because I have young kids, my younger kids actually doesn't know how to sort the expiration dates. So they have to, you know, depend on the adults to tell them if the food has been expired. If outside looks fine, let me just consume it. So I want to know what kind of additional procedures will be taken from Chartwell, maybe as a health for the teacher to help the younger kids to avoid consuming expired food. Because my kids actually had the expired meal last week. He had it until someone else told him that it's expired. So my second question is I really liked the idea of the focus group because I believe there is a big percentage of the parents are thinking about reevaluating our service company. So I think the focus group may be considered to further work on to maybe accommodate the parents' opinion and see if there's a need to reevaluate what's the food service company we're going to use. So that's my two questions. And I really appreciate opportunity to ask those questions. Thank you.
Just, I want to address that. A couple of the dating issues were brought to our attention and we do have our staff paying attention to dates. There have been things very close to date. We did find some milk product. And some of the products we use have used by dates, expiration dates, and manufacturer dates. So we're making sure that our employees understand the difference in those dates and the products that go out. We have addressed that. As far as the need for a focus group, every district is required to have a food service committee. And the food service company or department is supposed to be invited to that meeting to participate. So I can work with the district in trying to help you organize that meeting, whether we do it by school or by grade level or district-wide. It's entirely up to the district, but it's actually a USDA requirement.
Jim, I just want to add, prior to COVID, I had had several meetings in different schools. I would ask for a faculty member, a parent, students who are buyers, students who are not buyers, just to get their, you know, their, what they're thinking is happening right now, what they like, what they don't like, their opinion of what we're doing. And we were doing that through, I want to say February of 2019? 2019, it was March we shut down. 2020? I don't, I don't know what that is. I'm sorry.
Sure. I guess my follow-up comment is really about expiration date because my kids are very easy to feed, so they can consume in the same cold food for quite a while. But this expiration date is really make my, I'm very concerned about that. So I hope there can be some additional transparency about what kind of procedures or maybe the additional cautious has been implemented, especially to help the young kids who doesn't know how to identify the expiration date. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question. Of course, the expiration is, we all agree is unacceptable. I know you guys are working so hard and committed to making sure that's resolved. But in the meantime, you know, being a parent is a lot of the kids. Can we, are the teachers helping with meal time, looking at packaging? You know, it's easier for a teacher with maybe 15, 20 kids to look at meals. So as she's passing them out, can we guarantee that they're helping, looking at the food items as well and helping those little ones and making sure everything looks, you know, with quality, appropriate food to be consumed?
I will speak to the principals about the procedure. Next question.
Good evening. My name is Mudha Jan and I have one child in Orchard Hill. I have two questions for you, Jim. Thank you so much for taking the time to come here with Patty to face us. We can be a tough lot. So my first question is, I think you mentioned that the school is reimbursed $4.25 for a bag of carrots, a carton of milk, a sandwich, and an apple. And then the school pays Chartwell's for the meal that they provide. And I think you were about to mention how much it is that the school district is paying per meal, but I don't know what happened to that point. So could you possibly, please let us know how much Chartwell's gets paid per meal?
We work for a flat fee.
Say that again?
We work for a flat fee.
Okay.
The district incurs all profits and all losses from the food service program. It's our job to try to make the food service department solvent and operate in the black.
Okay. And is, are you in a position to kind of share with us what kind of a flat fee that might be? Is it percentage of the sales? Is it per meal or, sorry, you said it.
It's a monthly rate. We charge the district a monthly flat rate.
Okay.
A manager's fee.
A manager's fee. Oh, thank you. And then my second question is, in your speech, in your introductory speech where you provided a lot of information, very useful information, you mentioned that in June you were prepared to provide the school district with hot and cold meals. And then in August, it was the principals that decided against hot meals. So there were only two or three weeks to turn around the menu to bring it to a full cold meal service. Was the school district informed that a decision at that point in time could cause a significant impact on the quality of food, the quantity of food, the type of food that is being provided to the children?
We did have discussions during that meeting and after the meeting when we focused on the fact that we were going in totally different direction and it was going to take some time to retool and adjust to meet the new needs of the district. And of course, we understood the principal's concern with social distancing, but because of supply chain issues, what would normally take a couple of days is now taking weeks for us to make changes. So yeah, the district was made aware of it, but at that point, I don't know what else could have been done at that point. And we immediately started placing orders and started calling manufacturers and suppliers. We have national contracts with suppliers like Tyson and companies like that. So, you know, we reached out as soon as we knew we were going to have an issue.
Well, thank you, Jim. If I could follow that up with a question for the board. If the school district was informed, made aware that there could be concerns, would it have been possibly a better decision to offer food to the students that actually rely? I want just, for the sake of discussion, bucket students into two portions. One bucket being students that rely on the school's meal program for their daily nutrition and then other bucket of students where it is convenient for a parent to utilize the free lunch and breakfast program that is provided by the school. So if there was a concern that the right kind of nutrition, nutritious meals or the right kind of quantity or variety might not be made available to the entire school district, could we have possibly offered food to the children who actually needed it? Better food, different variety of food and more, to children who actually needed it than offer it to the whole school district with 5,000 children? Is that something that was even, was that a consideration or how would we have gone through that process?
Yeah, I think I understand the question. I think you're referring to the, our free and reduced student population versus our regular students?
Yes, I guess.
So over the summer, we actually did provide this year a summer option to all families in the district. So we were servicing both of those buckets. This school year, we continue to service both of those buckets because every student under the SSO program that's a free breakfast and a free lunch. So both buckets are being taken care of simultaneously, if I understand the question.
If I could expand on that, we couldn't just focus on the people who relied or depended on those meals, the free and reduced. It's against policy with the SSO program. You either sign on for the program or you don't have the program. When you sign on to the program, it's all or nothing. Everybody eats for free. You can't single out individuals.
Now, I sort of think you're meaning that could be if gotten better food for these people. Is that what you're saying?
For the children who actually needed, who.
Right, you know, better quality food.
Yes, yes.
And that's a problem that we all, correctly, we want better quality food and we've got to figure out how to do that.
Yeah, at least for the children who rely on the meal programs that are offered by the school. I, I'll be honest, I signed up for the convenience aspect of it, right? When my child came home day two and she said that it's the same food, I can't eat this, I said, okay, I'm going to switch to providing you home food, right? So I'm giving, sending her home food, home-cooked food. And a few days into the program, she said, well, I tried to get something, I don't know what it was. And she was like, I was not allowed to because I can either take the whole lunch, but if I bring anything from home, I can't take anything else that is being offered. I said, okay, that's the school policy. I'm going to find it. Whatever I send you from home, let's continue with that. But I was more concerned about the children who actually rely on the meal program for nutritious food, for good quality food. And when their parents, if they cannot send in food just because their child came home complaining that for three days in a row, I got the same meal. And I completely understand the issue that Chartwell's might be facing, labor concerns, it's all over, it's all over the nation. So it's not unique to any one particular segment of industry or life. But if we are saying the SSO program is an all or nothing, so we can't really focus on children who need the meals, then it's just a pity. I don't think there is anything more.
That is the issue. That is the issue. So the distribution of those meals must be non-discriminatory. So that is the issue. In order for us to receive those monies, we could not discriminate based on free and reduced eligible students and those who are now eligible for free meals based on this program.
Now, I want to go back because my assumption is that every student is, you know, can take these free meals, right? That's the possibility. So why would any kid, even if they bring a sandwich themselves, not be able to take the free meal?
I think what you're referring to, yes, they can take the free meal. They can't pick and choose what portions of that meal they want to take. They have to take the entire meal. A complete meal.
Now, that is unique to us because I know other schools.
No, that is not true. I'm sorry. If you take a reimbursable meal, a five-component meal, which is your bread, your protein, your vegetable, your dairy product, has to meet the nutritional guidelines by supplying all five of those products. If a child takes an orange or an apple and says, that's all I want, technically, they should pay for it because it's not part of the SSO program. They have to take the entire. They have to take the entire meal for the district to get the reimbursement. There's no such thing as a partial reimbursement.
But wait a second, you only need three parts of that meal to get a reimbursement?
That would, that's when we're offering, offer versus serve. When we're packaging meals, that's served meals. And there's a huge difference between offer versus served and served. So when I'm serving a meal, I have to serve all five components.
All right, so first, if, if, I'm sorry, your child could have taken the bag and decided to donate it or share the rest of that bag with somebody else.
Right, and then you could donated it to the food bank.
But she could, uh, is it she?
She.
But she could not just get the orange. She could have gotten the bag with everything.
Okay, so that's something that we didn't know about. So now I can tell her, I say, you could pick up the bag and give it to someone.
Grab the bag.
Okay, well, thank you.
It's a whole thing.
Thank you.
Never, never.
Everybody is trashing, that's what I mean. What do you say, all being trashed?
I just want to show what kids eat lunch every day, twelve days. Just like this.
I'm sorry, can I get your name?
Yvette. The first week, even don't have cheese. Every day. Just like this. One cheese. Two meat. All the same. Can you eat for twelve days? Please tell me. Twelve days. Every day. It's terrible.
We offer turkey. We offer ham, we offer ham and cheese.
Give you more kids eat this twelve days? Is that?
No, it's unacceptable.
I don't know why, what happened to that?
It's unacceptable to serve our children that type of sandwich every single day for lunch.
Every day. Have you seen that?
No, I, I agree with you, Jim. In the shape.
We are offering.
The sandwich.
We're, we're offering the sandwich along with the other products that go with it. That sandwich is supposed to have two ounces of meat or meat alternate on a roll. That meets the nutritional guidelines.
I don't know what I can say, I'm just very angry. Because, well, you, that your kids eat this every day? Next, tomorrow, next week, next month?
As I said, after a few days, we, we did offer the vegetarian and we started offering salads and protein salads. So they are being offered in the district.
I guess I want to say I'm sorry. You know, we, we are not happy with the situation.
I don't know what happened because I listened another school. They have free meal. They got different things every day. So I can't live it. Every day, I ask my daughter, she say, understand? She say, I can't eat.
What grade is your daughter?
Two, two, uh, second grade.
She's in second grade?
Yeah.
All right, so now we're also talking maybe weeks before the second grader gets hot meal. So to me, that's a real concern that if you can do this for the high school, right? And we have that food in your supply, you know, you, you have all of the hot meals that you ordered in August, right? Before, um, uh, the school changed to require you to do cold meals. There has got to be a way that we can expedite or, you know, speed it up so that those other schools are getting hot lunch sooner. Can we work with you on that?
As I said earlier, I could reach out to the school principals and coordinate with them. So yes, as soon as the school principals are able to facilitate it, then we can offer.
Thank you.
Thank you for having me.
Alan, please let us know. You know, please update us as well so that we all know what's going on.
Hi, good evening, I'm Mudha Jan and this is my first meeting and thanks to all of you for doing this. Uh, my son is a middle schooler and he, he tried the first aid food and he's not ready to try any, any craft for that. All my point was, you said that the other school districts, they are, uh, having very diversified food. So what is stopping in our school district to try that? Is that the cold and hot meal difference? Or is that some other food, uh, accreditation program? If something is stopping that kind of, uh, diversified food, uh, you know, proportion? Can we reconsider it? Can we take some suggestion on that?
We're willing to work with the school district and as I showed you, we proposed serving scenarios in, in the service areas. Uh, the, the big concern the district and the principals had was social distancing. Now, I can't speak for other districts. I can tell you what I've seen and it's not so much a concern in other districts. Um, and it's, it's a priority here. So we, we are accommodating the school the best we can. They do, we do not have mobile hot boxes or mobile hot serving lines. Everything we have is stationary. So we don't have the facilities or the equipment to do those things. And the other districts have some of that equipment. And as I referenced, South Brunswick, um, their social distancing guidelines must be somewhat different than here.
So I think you gotta say to our board members, maybe you could, this second grader taking twelve days with fake meals, definitely even we cannot accept it. So something we can think about it and work on it to give a different kind of food. That's what would be very helpful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Nadine Fugati. I have two kids in the school district and thank you, Jim, for coming here. Um, I have a couple of questions. So the first one is you mentioned that, you know, you're meeting the nutritional value. But who decides the menu, uh, you know, what's being served?
Patty works on the menu. Um, and again, that menu depends on what's available. As I said, we, we got Borzad deli meat in, but unfortunately to go district wide. The only thing we were able to get so far was turkey, ham, and I believe one of chicken products. That's all we're going to get so far. So we are waiting for more variety to come in, but it's just not currently available.
So I'll be honest with you, what I've heard so far is Tyson, Purdue and apparently Borzad, right? But I don't hear any, you know, uh, any, uh, real, uh, menu options being discussed. It's, it's as if like we are, we are limited to these options, is that so? Because, I mean, there are foods around, I mean, uh, outside of Tyson, Purdue and, and Borzad. Uh, I'm just wondering why we are so fixated on, on certain menu options.
Well, right now.
Because this lady, what he did, what she just showed us, that is totally unacceptable.
Right now, the district has asked for a cold brown bag lunch. That's what's being offered. In that lunch, we're offering a variety of sandwiches, salads, protein salads and vegetarian options. That's the brown bag lunch. And we're also doing a brown bag breakfast. Now, when we expand into hot foods, we can take the menu totally different direction. We can offer chicken products. Um, the most acceptable product for students, chicken and pizza, obviously. But we can expand into, into other products, but we have a very limited hot service base. And obviously, we're going to go for the, the, the most acceptable products upfront. So yes, we'll develop, uh, the menu as we move along.
So, so a follow up on that, I actually did try the pizza and my kids complained about the pizza. And that's the only thing they can eat because there's not many, uh, you know, vegetarian options.
Excuse me, when did you try the pizza?
Uh, when they have this, you know, come to school and try, you know, you sit down with your kid and have lunch.
That was two years ago. Uh, we changed, we, we've got some concerns about the pizza. Two years ago, we made changes district wide, especially in the elementary schools, and changed the pizza product that we were offering and did taste tests with the students. We invited board members and the administration to tour the schools with us and everyone at that time found it acceptable. So I'm not sure if you're referring to something happened a couple of years ago because we haven't served pizza since, uh, March of 2020.
So I, I take your word for it for now, but what I meant was like this.
I'm sorry, Jim, as far as taking my word, we didn't have the ability. School was not open. We have not served pizza since March of 2020.
No, I know that. But what I'm saying is that when you did serve that, it wasn't up to what you would expect. My kids never liked it, but that's the only thing they could eat. So, you know, whenever they didn't get food from home, they had to eat the pizza because there were no, not many vegetarian options being offered. That's what I meant, so.
Okay, and then two years ago, when that concern was brought to Chart Wells, we did meet with the administration and we did meet with the board and we did expand on the vegetarian options and we did change the pizza product. So as far as the information you're bringing today, it might be slightly outdated. Maybe you weren't informed that we did make those changes and upgrades to, to the program, but those issues were addressed two years ago.
Do you want to do vegetarian options that you offer, that you offered afterwards?
I'm sorry, I don't have the menu with me.
Okay.
But I'm sure I can dig up menus from two years ago.
Okay, I mean, I would love to see that, what options were there that might.
Because those menus were all posted online for the general public to see on our website.
I do believe you just now, what vegetarian option you have now.
Yeah, we, we.
No, he, he isn't available before.
No, I know what he was talking about before, but I, I do believe you want to know, am I correct?
Yeah, I mean, I also.
About vegetarian options right now.
Yeah, but I think Jim said that, you know, right now they're only offering cold and, you know, in that maybe the options with vegetarian are limited, so I understand that. But I would like to have more vegetarian options in the future, right? So that my kids can eat, because whenever they don't get lunch from home, you know, they can take.
We completely understand the need for vegetarian. It was brought to our attention two years ago and we understand that Democrats in this district have changed dramatically in the last two to three years. So we've been ramping up the vegetarian options and making them more readily available. And to your point, as we expand into hot food in the upcoming weeks, days and weeks, we will be expanding on the vegetarian options as well.
Okay, that's good. And one other last question, uh, so my, my son, actually, you know, we made a selection the night before and, you know, the next day when he went to school, he didn't have that selection. And so he actually went hungry because, you know, he couldn't, he, he couldn't eat the other food that was there. So what can we do to make sure that, you know, before the, before, um, I mean, I don't know why that happened, maybe because you ran out of, you know, the most popular item, I'm not sure. But, but is there a way to circumvent that and to have enough food for, for kids? Uh, you know, because this was the tuna sandwich actually. And when, when he went to ask for it, they said that it's over and, you know, that's it. That's, that's how it is.
As I explained, we're having serious supply chain issues. And when we get product shortages, um, we don't have more, sometimes more than a day's notice to make those changes. Well, today, for example, when we didn't have enough milk to go district wide, Patty was in the process of gathering milk and delivering it to the schools to go in elementary lunches. At that time, given the resources we had, she couldn't go on the computer and change the menu online to say milk was not available. So there are times when we can do that. We can address menu change, last minute menu changes. And other times, because of delivery schedules and, and resources that we have, not, I apologize in advance. It's not always possible to do that, given the, the current circumstances we're in.
So I, I mean, I appreciate all that you guys are doing and I know you're very, you know, um, obviously forward. But one suggestion I could make is that you don't put something on the menu unless and until you can ensure that you have enough for the next day. Can we do that at least?
Those menus are posted at the beginning of the month.
Do you want to make comments?
Technically, yes. But we haven't been enforcing it this evening. So if, if, if you could be respectful of everybody's time and complete your comments, we would appreciate that.
Okay, that's, that's all I have.
Okay.
I'm sorry, that was the last question.
Did, did you have your last question answered?
No, I think he was in the middle of us, isn't he?
Okay, did you, he just wanted to finish up, Jim?
I'm sorry, what was the question?
You were talking about how the menu, oh, yeah.
We post the menus a month in advance and the, the changes that we make um, would happen maybe the day after the day before. And when we've got time to do that, we're, we're trying to do that depending on deliveries and when they come in. It's, it's been very difficult to keep up with that. We're, we're doing what we can at this time.
Okay, I get that, thank you.
Obviously, is that something we communicate to the district or the community? Just sharing that menus are subject to change so they can prepare students? Um, just in explaining everything you said, that we're at a shortage, prepare a child, that this may unfortunately, you know, be what is stated, you know, on the menu. Like, just so kids are aware as well. Um, we know that you're working with one of the agencies, but always let the parents know. We can communicate that, it'd be helpful.
Can I make a comment?
Sure, uh, my name is Greg Brown, I live on Route 206. I have a daughter at Village who has, uh, had the same sandwich for every day this week or the school year so far. Jim, I, I appreciate you coming. Um, you didn't have to, so I appreciate you coming. Phyllis, I feel like you're somebody who could run my cafeteria any day. So I, I appreciate you guys. But I, I have more questions for sort of, sort of this side of, of the room. Um, having to go with Jim is, the analogy I would make is our contract is with you. So if, if we hired you guys to build us a house and I got the wrong fixtures in my bathroom, you're not going to tell me to go talk to my plumbing supplier. My contract is with, is with the board. So what was very telling about Jim's, uh, appearance today is that, that somehow we had a plan that was aborted on August eighteenth by the principals that decided that we couldn't go with the plan that I'm assuming was in place for a long time. We've been in a pandemic for eighteen months, yep. So the principals changed the goal line on Chart Wells on August eighteenth. And that throws everything into chaos. Is that, is that true or false?
I can answer that. So you are absolutely correct. And that's why I started out by saying that we understand that people are frustrated with the quality, the options and the only cold choices. So a couple of things happened. If you remember, masks kind of went away, right? And then Delta variant came back and we got the mandate that masks are back and social distancing is three feet and you have to adhere to that. The Delta variant was told to us, uh, very clearly that was going to be on that high rise up until the mid-October and then start to diminish. The Department of Health and the CDC, as, as well as the Somerset County Department of Health, advised school districts to maintain three feet at any cost. So the cost for us was going to be to not be able to serve hot food until the numbers reduce and we don't have to contact trace. We have had to contact trace in one of our buildings at lunchtime. The exposure is highest at breakfast and lunch or anytime the masks are down and children are close together. As Jim and Pat said, yes, it was a very difficult decision. We want to offer the same food that we had prior to the pandemic. If you've ever been to the high school, it's better than any food service you've ever seen anywhere. And, and I'm not joking. Um, so we all want that. So yes, we put Chart Wells in a predicament, but it was because we put safety paramount. We, we said, you know what? If it just means that we have to hold off serving pizza and chicken nuggets for now, we will do that. Because it is paramount to us to have the children be three feet apart, to stop the spread of the COVID virus and to have the district not have to shut schools down. Last week, I saw on the news, twenty-six schools are shut down and full remote because of spread.
In New Jersey?
Thus far, in New Jersey. Thus far, we have not had to shut down. We have had to quarantine children, which we do not want to do. So at any cost, we are going to stay three feet apart with masks on because we do not want our children to be home virtual. We want them to be in school full day in person. And for right now, that meant that we reassessed the first month and we said, you know what, at the high school, we think we can do it. And we're going to start implementing that on Thursday. So you are absolutely right, sir. And I'm glad that you pointed that out because I was going to finish with that by saying that I really appreciate Jim and Pat coming tonight and, um, thank you for addressing some of the issues that we cannot answer, like here and there with the food, um, purchasing.
So was, so were the principals themselves? So was, so were the principals themselves empowered to make that decision?
No, I was in that meeting as well.
So it was.
So I will take full responsibility, right? The principals themselves know their buildings, right, and so they walk through with their, uh, team and they said, okay, how can we do this? Right, at the high school, they had unit lunch, so 1,600 kids eat lunch at the same time. How can they do three feet apart? That's why we had that hybrid model last year, because we couldn't serve food because masks would have to be off to eat, right?
Sure, but the, the buildings have been the same the whole time, right? So if, if what you're telling me, like, I, I don't necessarily subscribe that it's an either or proposition, right? We can only do one or the other, right? Because we've had 18 months in the pandemic, so that would, that would pose the argument that we went into this, that Delta variant threw us a curveball that we were unprepared for. So that would tell me that we were preparing for this school year to be the best case scenario, that there was no variant that was gonna come in, that there was no wild card that was gonna come in, there was, you know what? COVID's behind us, smooth sailing.
No, no.
But, but because now, like, two weeks before this happens, now we're on tilt and, and, uh, we say that the, the queue up line is where seats are, like, we are not a district that lacks means. And so the lack of creativity or problem solving, Jim has said, he said, he'll do whatever we want him to do. But, but we're a month into school and we're all sitting now asking questions. And to your point, it's gonna be another month before my third grader has another option before a soggy turkey sandwich. No disrespect to him. But, but the, the lack of initiative or creativity of, of how we're gonna solve it, put another temporary building outside, bring in, like, where is the food focus group that was in place before COVID? There are a lot of creative people in this, in this community that if we draw upon those resources instead of waiting till a month after school to start figuring it out, that's the frustration. It's, the, the turkey sandwich is a byproduct of it. Like, that's, that's not, you know, I don't care if he serves that every day, it's our failure, not his. So how do we fix it from here? Where is the focus group that was recommended? How can we account for these resources? Blow through the budget? If you had to answer to these people next month, next year, that you blew through the school budget by a quarter million dollars so that you could feed the kids, I'll stand up here and I'll yell right back at anybody that objects to that, right? Like, come on, we're talking about feeding the kids, we're talking about health of our children as being paramount. Being three feet apart would be the only part, guys. I'm here for it.
Thank you, and we have started the discussion over a week ago, thank you.
Yep, the only thing I've.
Sorry, I didn't mean to walk away.
I, I, I'm really addressing everybody. I, I think that the comment that the district is not trying to do anything and that we're either uncaring, inept, or not being creative, I think is just false. I understand the frustrations and I cannot be, you know, so, and I've been in meetings, I know that there are things happening. I know that there have been meetings with our business administrator and Chartwell's to look at things. I know the principals are looking at things and so, you know, I'm, I'm not trying to make an excuse, I'm trying to provide a reason that things are being done, things are getting better and we have certain constraints to work with, but we're going to continue to address things as expeditiously as possible, I believe.
I really appreciate that and candidly, I think this forum for this sort of thing is a terrible idea, right? Because there's focus groups or committees where that information could be made public so everybody could consume it. Because I don't see that, nobody sees it, right? It's, it's, we, we get together once a month and, and we talk about what has or hasn't been. But there's a lot of things moving on the ground that we can't help with or we can't see or otherwise appreciate that, that initiative. So the idea that everybody gets up here and gets to opine for three straight minutes and it's not an active dialogue, accountability isn't about airing people out, I agree with you, accountability is how the hell do we fix it going forward?
Yeah, and, and I think that, I think that's one of the. I think that's one of the reasons why the superintendent set out and emailed. I think that's the reason why the superintendent set out last email to exactly say that we're addressing things and Chartwell's will be here as a way of informing the community. This is being taped, it will be available. I'd ask you to let your neighbors know if they have concerns about it. I'd also ask you, as was said, if there's a particular event where something was frozen, expired, let the local staff know and we are following up on things. So, you know, that's all I can say on that, thank you.
I can make a comment, just one comment. I, I understand we are in a difficult position and I believe district is doing everything they could. They're still trying to find creative solutions, but if it is a failure, it's a collective failure. We failed as a district, we failed as a board, and we all should be held accountable for it. And Jim, one thing you mentioned today, that you work for the management fee. So I'm making this recommendation to behalf of the board by taking the permission that if it is possible, can you come back with a proposal where you're perhaps charging more or somewhat closer to the reimbursed amount, but the quality of the food is highly superior?
I can come back to you with menu suggestions, has no impact on our management fee. It's strictly district's cost profitability. But yes, uh, if you're asking for much higher quality, we'll source those things out and I'll bring some menus back to the board.
Sure, perfect, and on behalf of board, do we have a permission to ask for that proposal?
I'm sorry?
On behalf of the board, can we ask for that proposal?
Can we ask for that proposal, please? I, I think I mentioned this before and I know it was at this point, you know, pre-COVID, we did do a survey and we did find out that the majority of parents were willing to pay a dollar more for meal if we could get better quality. So, um, we may have to redo that just so that we're up to date and, and confirm. Um, and maybe we also have to determine how much money we're willing to make. If we can sacrifice some of our income for that as well. Uh, I hadn't wanted, this was part of my president's report, but one of the committees I, um, am working on starting and we've talked about this, is an ad hoc committee on food, right? So we will be asking for parents, we will be asking for students, as well as board members, to participate and have these dialogues. Because we need to take care of this. And, um, so that will be coming up soon. So please, um, when you see it, you know, please volunteer so we can, um, have people participate. Is there anyone else who has, wants to ask a question?
Yes, I just wanted to finish one.
Okay.
So Jim, from you, how soon we can have that proposal?
Before I can develop a menu, I need to check our sources. I, I can't sit here and promise a menu when I don't know what's.
Give it a, two weeks, three weeks.
Two weeks.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Philaski.
Good evening, uh, my name is Joanna Bluff and I wanted to thank everyone for, uh, your comments and sorry for taking so much heat, but it's very important to us to, to feed our kids with the highest quality food. Uh, but as I was listening and I was trying to figure out what exactly the problem is, I can hear different, um, reasons and I was trying to figure out like what exactly is in our control. And one of the problems that I noticed is that our district is putting a lot of restrictions on even food distribution, which other districts do not. So I was just wondering, so can we just revisit the roles of how restrictive our, um, district is in terms of what we can, what we cannot do and maybe benchmark ourselves against our districts just to see what's working, what's not working? Because maybe we are too restricted, you know, and this is why we have those issues that right now we are discussing. Just consider that, because, you know, what's the reason?
That, that's actually a superintendent decision, so I wouldn't talk about that.
So we can like on that, you don't have to be, you know, put on this part right now.
Right, about relaxing that.
At this time, we will constantly look at that when we look at the numbers and we are constantly in contact with the Department of Health and our organization.
We see that our restrictions are much higher than the actually, you know, restrictions put out by CDC, government, we are taking, you know, an extra step in restrictions. So maybe we should reevaluate that because it seems like it's impacting many areas of the school experience in our district.
No, I'm excited.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello?
Okay. Last year, a lot of the budget got taken away from.
Sorry, could you say your name?
This is Jean Sari, I have two kids in high school. But I just wanted to say, before you take the budget, like, evaluate the budget, make sure you're not taking the budget from the programs because last year we, we've lost budget on the music programs and the art program because of different reasons and I don't want that to happen again this year. Okay? Any other comments? I want to go back for a second, um, we will, um, put the contract for Chartwell's on the website so everyone can see that and I wanted to give you, I know for me, it's always frustrating when you, you just get, um, someone giving you a vague number rather than a real number. So I wanted you to know that, um, we pay a hundred and twelve thousand dollars annually to, um, Chartwell's and that comes out to be an eleven thousand two hundred monthly. So like, someone could ask for the contract amount of, of our. I guess I, I want to say, Fran T, you have no question?
I don't want to talk about food service, I want to talk about something else.
All right, so here we go, we'll now go to, um, to, um, the first, uh, oh, I'm sorry, what am I doing? I apologize. Thank you so much for coming, is there anything else you'd like to talk about?
No, thank you for the opportunity, I appreciate it. Thank you guys.
No, I'll just be on this super. Thank you. Thank you. All right, so we're now going to the first public, um, comment. Members of the public are granted one opportunity to bring any new business to the board for up to a maximum of three minutes per speaker. All comments or questions must be directed to the board president. The Board of Education welcomes and encourages input from the public. There are two times during board meetings that the public is invited to speak. One time is now, when members of the public are invited to bring any new business to the board for up to a maximum of three minutes per speaker. Later in the meeting, there will be a second opportunity to address the board regarding action agenda. Before you make your comment, please state your name, address, and subject matter. Being mindful of privacy rights regarding students and board employees and to avoid any potential liability on the part of the speaker, the board discourages references to specific individuals. While directing your comments or questions to the board president, please understand that the public comment portions of the meeting are not structured as question and answer sessions, but rather are offered as opportunities for you to share your thoughts with the board. The board president may need to refer an issue to the superintendent if the particular issue has not been handled through the appropriate chain of command with the school district before coming to the board for a response. Responses may be provided at the end of the session. However, there are times when comments and questions will require additional information gathered before a response is provided. Are there any? Please come up to the podium.
My name is Francis Lobel, this is my first, I guess, meeting for the board. Uh, I guess, Mr. Bush, my, my question is specifically, do you have any, I guess, the swimming pool at the high school, I've sent you two emails already. Uh, it seems like it's not open for rec-related purposes, every time I call up, or either my wife and I call up, uh, you know, direct, for the, for the Marlins program, they're directed to contacting the Board of Education, so other towns have opened up, like Princeton, for example, uh, you know, has their program, which is open right now. The YMCA is open and what have you. Is there a specific reason why, I guess, the high school is not open for rec programs? Just trying to give you a take on it.
We haven't actually received an official request to use the rec department.
Well, if you look at their website, it says they're reading for a decision from you guys to see if they can open it or not.
We've approved the rec department for any facility use they've requested us to use, we've, we've approved it. Our buildings are open for our local rec department.
Well, maybe.
So Karen Zimmerman just has to email me and give me her, the dates and time she wishes to use the pool.
Okay.
Uh, assuming they're not in conflict with our swimming team or any type of gym class. And we have a, we have a shared service agreement with our recreation department.
So technically, the Marlins program could be in session, would it?
Yeah, they use our pool, we haven't received an official request yet from the rec department.
So whom should we write to, because we call them up, like, generally they say, write to the board, contact the board, we have no margin.
I'll, I'll call Karen.
Okay.
Take your.
Thank you.
Hello, good evening. My name is Jennifer Vessler, I live on Terry Hill Road, Princeton, New Jersey. I'm here just to speak about outdoor policy in general. And the first topic is masks outside for our student population. Currently, to my knowledge, the CDC guideline, I know our superintendent cited why we had to ask indoors, we're following the government executive order, so I'm not here to talk about that. But I'd like to better understand what policy is driving mandates outside for after-school activities, let's say, outdoor gym class or track and field or any other sports that we have on campus. Is, does the board, is the board aware of the policy that's driving this mandate for our schools going outdoors specifically?
The Department of Health has told us to have children wear masks during recess unless it fits under the requirement of the executive order, which is why we are entering to that rule.
The Department of Health of New Jersey, I presume, is what you're saying? And the reason why, oh, okay, the reason why I bring this up is there was a petition that was started last week and within less than a week, we had a hundred and seventy-eight parent signatures, some of whom I know are healthcare professionals, including physicians and nurses that signed. Um, and so I think we would just like some transparency as to what's driving that policy, especially outside for our children, especially if they're outdoors and are physically exerting themselves and if we could get a bit more clarity in just the Department of Montgomery Health, what's driving their decision, that would be very helpful.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Um, the second question I have, and I was actually hoping our senior was, was still here to answer my question. One of my children is, um, a freshman in high school and I have not that much experience with high school and how much outdoor time they get, again, this is on the outdoor topic. Um, but my understanding is it's extremely limited. So children aren't allowed to be outside, let's say, a portion of their lunch period or it, it's a lot more restrictive this year, is my understanding, and I just want to understand if there are new restrictions around COVID as to why we're limiting the entire high school body from being outside at any given point, when they're normally permitted, permitted, of course. Is anybody aware of that?
I am not, I haven't looked into that.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Hi, good evening, I'm Jennifer Bulson, I'm an elementary school parent here in the district and I also am a member of the steering committee of Montgomery CPAG, the Special Education Parent Advisory Group. Um, I understand the district is well aware of the role of the CPAG, but for the benefit of the parents and guests, I would just explain that CPAG is a state mandated body, um, of parents and community members who are supposed to gather to provide system-level district-wide advice and counsel when invited to the Board of Education and Administration regarding issues related to special education. Um, I was very heartened this evening to see the passion of the parents regarding issues related to food service and how quickly the board was enthusiastic about inviting a focus group of those parents and really finding solutions to food-related issues. We on the CPAG are equally passionate about special education issues in our district, not only for our children, but for all of us who are attached by special education. And we also would hope that a door would be open for all of us to meet on a regular basis to discuss issues pertaining to special education and we look forward to working with you this year harmoniously and productively and we look forward to your ideas for how we could do that in a more systemic way. Thanks.
I guess I just wanted to say, my second announcement before the president's report was that we also want to create. That needs my CPAG as well.
Thank you.
All right.
Good evening. My name is Anya Oluk-Gen. I live on Kent's Place in Belkite. And this evening, I would like to follow up on the September 1 Zoom call that took place with the superintendent and Montgomery Township Health Officer, where we were notified of the plan to return to school safely. Post the call, I reached out to both parties and fortunately have not heard back yet, but there are a few areas that I'd like to discuss. One is the quarantine policy as well as data gathering or information gathering of COVID for our district. Masks were already addressed, and I think it's critical for us to take a look at why our kids are not allowed to be mask-free when they're outdoors, when they're supposed to get their exercise. So a couple of comments I wanted to make, you know, I've requested some studies from the health department, and I, like I said, I have not yet received it. So I've done some homework myself, and a recent study of about 40,000 children with COVID showed that there was no significant threat from the virus, and I mean significant threat, meaning death. An annual death among children in U.S. per 100 ages 5 to 14. I'll share some statistics with you. 2.1 out of 100 have a chance of dying from cancer. 1.9 out of 100 have a vehicle accident. 1.5 from suicide, 0.7 homicide, 0.6 cardiovascular disease, 0.5 drowning, 0.3 flu, which we never masked our kids up for flu, and 0.2 for COVID. So I'm here today because there's a couple of points about quarantine policy in particular that concerns me. You're differentiating, well, first of all, I feel the policy you have set for unvaccinated children is discriminatory in nature, and I don't think it is a sound science, considering emerging data on breakthrough cases for vaccinated individuals. You know, as of 9/15, vaccinated students are at risk to both transmit the virus and get COVID, yet they're not required to quarantine, per your policy. So going back to the comments earlier, I think we really need to revisit the policies that you have put in place, from social distancing, food services, quarantine, all of those things need to be revisited and discussed collaboratively among many individuals. I'm also happy to share with you that a study by Dr. Roberta de Viasy on Delta variants showed that both cases and hospitalizations are at the same percentage, 12% to 15% of cases and 3% to 4% hospitalizations for children, even during the Delta variant. So my final point is around data gathering and communication. We get the email that there's 25 cases and 30 cases, and things are spreading. I think as parents, we really need to better understand the age groups that are impacted by COVID, as well if there are any hospitalizations or serious illness caused by the disease. We would like to see less of the language that was emailed to me last week of culture of compliance. I'm a free thinker. I like to teach my children to be free thinkers, so I would like for us to change that language a little bit, because I can assure you that our kids leave school, they do not wear masks, they have activities, they go to football games, they have sports indoors and outdoors, they have friends' visits, they have sleepovers, we go to restaurants, and we try to live as normal life as possible. So when they come to school and they are forced to mask up and comply and socially distance with friends and separated at lunch tables and constantly policed by teachers and led to believe that there's something profoundly wrong, my question to you is that I'm asking you, what is so different about being in school? As per our health department representative, kids are going home to 96% of vaccinated adults. I don't think that should be a concern for us, so I'm asking you to revisit those policies. I ask that you stop using fear and show strength and resilience to our student body. You're putting unjust burden on our kids and on our families. So I will leave you with the same thoughts that you've shared with us in your videos for Back to School Night. Be kind to our kids, please. Thank you very much.
Hi. Good evening. I'm Francine Pfeffer. I was in Skilman, and I am also talking about masking, but I have the other perspective. So first of all, thank you, Ms. McLaughlin and the board. I really appreciate that my son has been in school full-time, all day. His learning is so much better. He is so much happier. Teachers last year did the best they could, but learning was different when they were learning through a screen. So do students need to mask outdoors? Here's what the CDC says. I took it right off their website in the part about education. In general, people do not need to wear masks when outdoors. CDC recommends that people who are not fully vaccinated wear a mask in crowded outdoor settings or during activities that involve sustained close contact with other people. Fully vaccinated people might choose to wear a mask in crowded outdoor settings if they or someone in their household is immunocompromised. My sixth grader tells me that there is not a lot of social distancing going on at recess, and he likes the fact that he wears his mask. There may be children in our schools who are immunocompromised or have underlying medical conditions themselves, or who have family members who are. There may be staff who are in that same situation. So instead of complaining that our children shouldn't be wearing masks outdoors and talking about relaxing our safety measures, let's think about everybody else who wants to send their children to school without risk of severe illness to themselves or their family members. Your child wearing a mask outdoors is a very small price to pay to help everybody else. Unlike going to a museum, a Broadway play, or a professional sporting event, school is required, and the under-12 set doesn't yet have the option of being vaccinated. I don't know the medical history of the children in school with my child or that of their families. From everything I'm hearing, I am a public education advocate. I work in public education. Mask wearing doesn't really bother children. It bothers us, the adults, and we are bothered on their behalf. It's very disappointing to me that some parents are ignoring the health and safety of others. I don't see the difference between helping your neighbor clean out their basement after Ida or having your child wear a mask at schools. Both are helping your neighbor. It seems that we're not only fighting a medical pandemic, but we're fighting a pandemic of selfishness. So to the Board of Education, when you're making these decisions, and Ms. McLaughlin, please think about children and staff who have underlying conditions or are immunocompromised, or who have family members who are, or their staff, or the staff in your schools who are. And please keep the outdoor mask requirement, especially at schools for the under-12 set. Perhaps we should even require adults to wear masks at sporting events. You have that power. You don't let people smoke, and you would never let them show up naked to a game, would you? So, you know, I understand asking for vaccination status would be difficult, but requiring them to wear masks would not be. And that would allow everybody to feel safe. If I were a child whose brother was playing a football game and I had a medical condition, if everyone around me were wearing masks, it would make my ability to attend that sporting game much safer. And that's your job as the Board of Education, isn't it, to protect the children and staff in our schools? So I close with this. If it were your child who was immunocompromised or who had an underlying condition, wouldn't you want other children to wear masks outdoors to ensure your child's safety in schools? A child's right to go to school safely is more important than the small convenience that this puts on us outdoors. Even vaccinated adults who are exposed to COVID can get it. My assistant at work just did. She had a breakthrough case. Fortunately, we were both wore masks, and I didn't get it from her. So let's make schools as safe as we can for everyone, please. Thank you.
Paul Fati, on 6 Matthews Rom Road, Belkite, New Jersey. And my question is around the outdoor mask policy as well. Oh, sure. Around the outdoor mask policy? So if I understand the comments earlier, it's the Montgomery Board of Health that gave us the recommendation of wearing masks outdoors, correct? The state of New Jersey, Murphy, did not mandate outdoor masks, correct?
Well, the CDC.
We're in for the CDC, right?
No, no, the CDC.
But no, Governor Murphy said we have to wear them indoors, but not outdoors, correct?
In the executive order.
The executive order. So why are we relying on Montgomery Board of Health, which is really one person who wanted us to wear masks in Montgomery Park when COVID was at an all-time low, and still wear masks outside? Why not follow the governor on the playground?
So I was just right out loud, the CDC, God.
In crowded places. Those playgrounds aren't that crowded. I got a different story from my son.
Recess?
Yeah. If you want to wear a mask, wear a mask. You can choose to wear a mask, but why don't everyone wear it if the state's not mandating it? I mean, why? We have one board of health person who wants you to wear a mask. I mean, why do it? Why not revisit that policy?
We're constantly moving with it in the policy.
But if Governor Murphy says you don't have to wear masks outside, why are we doing it? We have one board of health person saying you have to do it. We're going to the extreme like we did with the lunches, giving principals the power to change the whole menu.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else? I think a lot of these things were already answered.
Ms. Burke, could you elaborate on the special education group that you meant to talk about?
Later.
Oh, okay. I thought you meant to talk about it today.
Basically, it'll be an ad hoc committee, but we're just starting it. Our goal is to talk about it and develop it. We definitely want to work with CPAG on it and also, you know, work with other people as well that they have this concern. I don't know, we hadn't talked about students, but, you know, maybe that is a possibility as well. So we're going to want to get everyone's advice on that to develop. So I would expect that we're going to start, I believe. I did ask Zell, if she would help head this, am I correct?
I'm sorry.
Well, let me wait. I mean, I think the board has to make a decision, but what we will, we will probably have more information in a week, you know, to really tell you who we're going to go with this. But this has definitely been something in the works for a while, and we want to start at this in a spot.
Thank you.
Let's see. I didn't, I don't know where the culture of compliance led us to miss that, that letter. Let's see. I guess the real question is, will we revisit the policies for outdoor masking? And I guess I want to know, who are the people who have to make that decision?
I think we've always worked in consultation with the school tradition and the Department of Health.
Okay. So is it something that we can look at again? I know you, I think you do on a weekly basis.
Yes, we do. I read it.
So we've worked on that. I guess I want to ask, is there anything, I should say, this is Stephen Probody, our attorney.
Stephen Probody.
Is, are there any legal concerns we need to think about, about outdoor masking?
Executive Order 251, as modified by Executive Order 253, which were the government's executive orders, dealt with the face covering requirement for endorseable spaces. The executive order says, however, that nothing in that executive order should be interpreted to mean that based on the local determination that the, that you cannot impose greater restrictions on the executive order. So you have the discretion to take a look at what is happening in Montgomery and whether or not you need to impose a greater restriction based on the size of the school, the size of the playground area, the number of students who are using that venue at any given time to determine whether you are going to follow CDC guidelines or the local Department of Health guidelines and impose more strict requirements for that school or any of your schools in the district. So I think that these policies are revisited by the superintendent in consultation with the school nurses at each of the schools, and our school physician, and are subject to change as conditions continue to change. And hopefully, we will move to, we will move to a place in the district where those restrictions can be reduced. But ultimately, that is the superintendent's decision based on the information that she receives from each of her schools and after consultation with the school physician and the Department of Health.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So I think I've answered any, everything, or we've addressed everything. So I'm going to move on now to committee representative reports. We've already had the student representative report. So next, we will have the MTA report by Jim Dolan.
Good evening, Board of Education members and community members. It's nice to be back in this space, in this big space, rather than our little cramped room that we're in for the summer, but it certainly makes sense. So Jim Dolan, President of the Montgomery Township Education Association, for those of you who may not know me. I had the pleasure of visiting all the school buildings on the first day of school. It was, there's nothing like the excitement of the first day of school. It was really good to see. We couldn't see as many smiles with a mask, but we knew they were there. From the high school, it started with staff clapping students as they walked in, all the way to Orchard Hill, where staff were greeting students and finding their way through the building with backpacks that I think outsized their own bodies. So it was fun to see, and it was fun to be a part of. It didn't take long for me to get put to work as well. I helped a middle school to help students with doing the combination walk. Apparently, that's a skill you never lose, as it came back to me like riding a bike. I was sweating in there for a little while, but I was able to help a few students. That was great. I also want to thank Superintendent McLaughlin for dealing with the storm of Ida, having the foresight and the planning of what could happen in a storm where some of us thought, you know, hey, a little bit of rain, but obviously turned out to be a lot more. It was devastating to a lot of our community members, to a lot of our staff members that work here, and certainly tore up our community. We were able to get back sooner than we ever expected, sooner than we ever hoped. So, you know, really, it's a tribute to the planning and collaboration that happens here in our district, and I do thank Superintendent McLaughlin's leadership to make sure that we got back as soon as possible, missing the least amount of days of staff development, the least amount of days of students to not have to amend the calendar further than we did. From an equity point of view, our association has finished our book club over the summer called Unconscious Files, and had a closing session on August 31. And we had meaningful conversations around topics of, you know, what did you learn? What stood out to you? What did you learn that you can apply within your own life? What did you learn that you can apply in your role as an educator within the school district? But that was really great. Our Equity Chair, Mr. Rodriguez, also met with all of the building equity reps that we're proud to have this year as paid positions through our MTA. So we met with those, tried to map out a plan that we'll be doing for the school year, for the New Jersey. As a DLT, we met on September 22. We discussed important topics like exciting changes to our wellness program here in the district. We collaborated on our mission and vision statement that we'll be working on. As we're hiring an equity person for our district, it became quite evident that we really need to revisit that and add equity and make that a piece of our mission and vision. So that was some real important work that got started, still need to do some work there. We discussed revisions to our calendar, which will be actually approved tonight to make accommodations for Ida and also the observance of Juneteenth as part of our calendar that we're going to be celebrating. And our next DLT is scheduled for October 20. So Ida was devastating to many of the residents that we had, and many of our staff members, and maybe people standing right in front of us, our neighbors, our board members. So our schools fared pretty well. From an equity point of view, our association has finished our book club over the summer called Unconscious Files, and had a closing session on August 31st. And we had meaningful conversations around topics of, you know, what did you learn? What stood out to you? What did you learn that you can apply within your own life? What did you learn that you can apply in your role as an educator within the school district? But that was really great. Our Equity Chair, Mr. Rodriguez, also met with all of the building equity reps that we're proud to have this year as paid positions through our MTA. So we met with those, tried to map out a plan that we'll be doing for the school year, for the future. As a DLT, we met on September 22nd. We discussed important topics like exciting changes to our wellness program here in the district. We collaborated on our mission and vision statement that we'll be working on. As we were hiring an equity person for our district, it became quite evident that we really need to revisit that and add equity and make that a piece of our mission and vision. So that was some real important work that got started, still need to do some work there. We discussed revisions to our calendar, which will be actually approved tonight to make accommodations for Ida and also the observance of Juneteenth as part of our calendar that we're going to be celebrating. And our next DLT is scheduled for October 20th. So Ida was devastating to many of the residents that we had, and many of our staff members, and maybe people standing right in front of us, our neighbors, our board members. So our schools fared pretty well, believe it or not. Part of the reason for that was our members at the high school, our custodians, and at the upper middle school were kinda stuck. They weren't able to go home. So they stayed the night, and they mopped up whatever rain they could. They mitigated whatever they needed to do, and they spent the night probably a little bit uncomfortably, then found probably a nice old nook somewhere in the building, and they cleaned up whatever they could and saved music equipment, damaged a certain thing, and it worked out really well. So for their sacrifice, they're the only people I know that can do this with a smile. So I did print out a little picture, so this is them spending the night. So I know a lot of our board members have heard this story already from some of our subcommittee meetings, but I wanted to make sure the whole board is able to see that. I really wanted to celebrate their dedication, as all of our staff members do, to our wonderful school district. So with that being said, that's my report for tonight, trying to keep it nice and light and public. Thank you all.
Thank you, Jim.
Jim. All right, next are board delegate and representative reports. Does anyone have anything?
Just briefly, if this is allowed. So yesterday, Monday, September 27th, from 6:30 to 8 o'clock, I had the privilege of attending the MSETDA meeting, the first for the 21, 22 fiscal year. And just with brevity, the president opened it up, greetings. The UMS Principal, Ms. Delgado, was present, as well as the Director of Special Services, Kristen Taylor. Both of them greeted everyone and provided a report to the committee. So for example, Ms. Taylor was delighted to share with the group that there are over 50 new students in the district receiving special services. She reminded everyone about her monthly newsletter and also that, and if you can please share this with members of the community, everyone, that we're looking for jobs to identify, work-study, you know, opportunities for our students. And I think the critical part she mentioned at the open meeting was that the employers, you know, must be open to her methodical process, which includes a willingness, obviously, to partner with us, review all of the work tasks and fill in the necessary data sheets. Mr. Delgado just reminded everyone there were some questions around Kent Mason. He indicated that's been pushed back, you know, although apprehensively on his behalf, that it might be safer and more appropriate in the springtime of 2022, but continue to serve the same purpose of, you know, camaraderie and team building and getting those eighth graders in that pathology of thinking around being, advising ninth graders. And then finally, they reviewed and adopted their budget, and I think that's it. Oh, one more note, I apologize, Madam President. One more note is that MSETDA is looking for parent liaisons to attend PTO and PTA meetings. If anyone is interested, please reach out to them. And they're also looking for teacher liaisons, teacher members to join the organization.
Did I, I can do a deputy DL meeting last year, September 22nd? I think just the one thing that I heard from the parents who were there asking if we would think about or reconsider having again either a Zoom link or a live, you know, Facebook Live of the board meetings at the same time that we're having it, even if it's not for interaction, but they wanna be able to listen to the discussions live. So I said I'd bring that back to the board. There was just one thing that they brought up, if we would think about it, I guess.
Thank you. All right, I'm going to move on then to assessment curriculum and instruction committee, ACI.
Oh, that's me again. Okay. So good evening, everyone, again. So as typical, I'm always humbled to serve on your behalf as the co-chair of the ACI committee, and it's a board responsibility I share with our Assistant Superintendent Damian Papa sitting there to my right and your left. So we met on Wednesday, September 15th. The meeting was attended by the MTEA and APSMT presidents, as well as other Board of Education members, the superintendent, and administrative personnel too. So during the meeting, Mr. Papa expressed his gratification of working with the transportation supervisor, Mr. Washington. While we apologize for the worry parents may have felt during the delayed return home of their children in those first few days of school, please know that Mr. Washington would diligently to remedy the matter with poison compassion. We encourage you to check out the homepage of our website to see us recognize Hispanic Heritage Month, September 15th to October 15th. The new Equity Data and Accountability Director, Stacy Young, is revising our DEI Diversity Equity and Inclusion tab on our website, so stay tuned for further developments. Dr. Daniels conducted training workshops to the staff in the beginning of the school year after obtaining their feedback. The Curriculum and Instruction Department talked about the GNT, the Gifted and Talented Initiative. Levers have gone out to families with the COGAP cognitive abilities testing schedule for this fall. And it's important that you know, the district chose COGAP because it can be administered by a classroom teacher. That's one of the reasons that it was selected. And the district's Gifted and Talented program is not necessarily an academic acceleration program, but more is along the lines of fostering skills, creative thinking, and acknowledging passion and interest within students, particularly those that may experience an aversion to school. Then the high school vice principal, Heather Pino Beatty, facilitated a presentation on LGBTQIA+ rights update. She indicated that there's representation of this community throughout various content areas of the high school courses. The culture of acceptance starts, she stated, when a student walks in the door by asking how they identify themselves and how you can tell us how to refer to them in class with their parents in private. She also referenced that curriculum changes due to modifications to various state standards, whether in social studies, physical education, or health. And in speaking on behalf of Corey Gaylord, the Director of our Counseling Department, that counseling services continue to be robust, and the start program is servicing students. The Special Services Department stated that we have a number of families, as I indicated, that are, that were unfortunately displaced because of the storm. So the district has been working in coordination to provide support to those families, and they're all eligible under our McKinney-Vento law, providing different supplies and other resources to help them get back on their feet. So the Counseling Department has been diligent in providing parents, students, and the community education workshops, with the most recent one that was held last week titled, How to Support Students as They Head Back to School, and that was facilitated by Lisa DeMore. So there were over 100 families, including myself, that logged on for this much-needed conversation. So a big shout out to Corey Gaylord and Lisa. We ran out of time at this ACI meeting, but next month, one of the items we will discuss is the new state guidelines for NJTSS, New Jersey's Tiered System of Supports. And this initiative actually builds upon the currently mandated INR rest, which is intervention and referral services. And finally, it's truly a privilege to provide these ACI updates to you, and I look forward to doing so for the remainder of the school year.
Next, the anti-reductions in the report committee, ARRC.
Thank you. Our ARRC meeting met on September 15th, and we began our meeting with updates. Mary shared that Dr. Daniels provided professional development training for our staff. Matt Rodriguez shared, who is, excuse me, President MTA's Equity Committee, provided updates about a book that was read by staff. Our student representatives have little to report, being the first weekend to school. And we welcomed one of our newest members of our committee, Stacy Young, who is our Director of Equity, Data, and Accountability. And she welcomed everyone and acknowledged our virtuality in the first day of Hispanic Heritage Month. We spent some time discussing January, our restructure, the restructuring that will occur and take place in our committee. And we spent a great deal of our meeting discussing a letter that we'd like to create for the community. The meeting focus already viewing a letter that was created to introduce ARRC to the community and to share its vision, mission, objectives, and more. The letter led to meaningful discussions, which included what is ARRC's ultimate goal, its purpose, and how can we include and educate our community, things like that. And our next meeting will be October 20th. Thank you.
Next, Policy and Communications Committee.
So the committee met on September 17th. We reviewed the policies that are on Agenda Item 1.2 for first reading tonight. So board members have an opportunity to look through those and let the Policy Committee know if there are any other items that you would like us to consider at the next policy meeting before we adopt it at the next board meeting. We reviewed the state mandated changes through policies, and we also looked at the policies almost from scratch and looked at the unchanged sections as well. And there was a fair amount of discussion around there, and some relatively minor updates were made, and they're reflected in tonight's items. One of the policies that we did discuss that's not on tonight's reading is the robotics club has acquired a drone, and the district did not have any policy dealing with how drones are used and their restrictions and how are they supervised. And so there were some comments in policy. That then went to the OFF Committee, the Operations Facilities and Finance Committee. And then we have subsequently sent that back to policy, so we're going to be making one more pass on that. And then I expect that that will come for first reading at the next board meeting. Because of all the discussion on the policies themselves, we did not get a chance to talk about communications. In the past, we've talked, we obviously want to engage the community. I mean, it was great having people out here. It's unfortunate that we had a crisis of food service to cause that to happen. And, you know, just like we have, we have added, by the way, communications as one of the four district goals and enhancing our communication. And so I believe that the Policy Committee will be further looking at that. I would, I thought the idea of having focus groups in the context of the food service might also be a positive way of trying to make sure that we're meeting the needs of the community from a communications and community information perspective. And so we'll be reviewing that. The other thing I noticed or noted is that the Diversity Equity Inclusion Audit that we did, one of the things that we all discussed that we thought was worthwhile was the survey instruments that were used to understand people's, you know, thoughts and where things stood. And that's another idea that I believe the committee should be looking at. If there are other board members who have comments, please pass them on so we can discuss it at our next meeting. Thank you.
And I call that a skipover.
I've always did it as skipover.
Operations and Facilities.
Finance.
Money made.
Money made.
All right, thank you, it's no problem. We have met on Friday, 24th, along with our committee members. We were joined by representatives from MTA and APSMT. And we also had Chartwell join in, both Jim and Pat were there. So the bulk of the conversation was focused on food services. I know it's 10 o'clock, so I'm not gonna rehash two hours of our conversation. I'm gonna skip it, spare everyone. Couple of other things we talked about was ACA reporting. So for tax provisions for all of our employees who have that ACA facility, we are looking at hiring contractors to help us with that, a prime point. The other topic we talked about was looking at custodian services. So specifically in lower middle school, we are looking at changing that and having a full-time custodian on the district side so that we can manage it more effectively. In addition to that, we talked about transportation. There were few minor issues raised and reported, those were discussed. And lastly, drone policy was reviewed, which has already covered that. And lastly, there were some regular and actual reports to be reviewed and approved. So we discussed all of that. So those are both updates from the board. Thank you.
And HRRC, Human Resources.
Yes, so HR Resources met on September 14th, and as usual, we talked about personnel issues. But I also wanted to just share quickly two things that we discussed there. That Kelly Marris, who's the Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources, mentioned. Things that HR does to look at grants or opportunities that are being offered by the state that we can take advantage of. An example that she gave was the New Jersey State Police and the Office of Emergency Management offered free masks, we took advantage of that. We took even the maximum number of masks that we were allowed to get and using ESAR funds to help support COVID-related staffing issues. So there are ways that HR uses, you know, resources out there to help the district. So just wanna share that.
Thank you. Next is the President's Report. I've already told you about the ad hoc committees. I do want to agree with Jim Dolan that we'd like to thank McLaughlin for her proactive actions with Ida. And we were, I think, the only district that actually addressed these things properly and were prepared for, for, you know, all the consequences of the, of the storm. I'm not gonna discuss the other stuff I have right now until later. I'll do it at the President's comments at the end because we're at a bit of a timeframe, so I'm going to try to quickly go through everything else. We need to go to another executive session, so I'm trying to get everything else done as quickly as possible. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes? August 24th, Executive and Business, and September 23rd, Executive and... and Specialty, sorry. A second? All those in favor?
Right.
Opposed? All right, abstentions? All right, I want to acknowledge the letters that we got to the board, and I probably should also announce, I mean, acknowledge, I think there were about 25 or 30 that we got today on food, so thank you for all of that. Now we'll move on to our second, public comments. Members of the public are allotted one opportunity to address the board regarding the action agenda brought to a matter of three minutes during this period of the meeting. All comments or questions must be directed to the Board President. The Board President may need to refer an issue to the Superintendent if the particular issue has not been handled through the appropriate chain of command within the school before coming to the board for a response. All responses will be provided at the end of this session. Any comments?
Can you ask, please? I'll see you. I'm sorry, you will not.
You will mask. Yes, that's a requirement.
I need to tell you and explain that a few boards recently have been fined or received --
It's a prior risk.
No, but have received sanctions because we have not, you know, required everybody to mask, so we're trying to --
I don't want to get anybody in trouble. What I wanted to ask is why at LMS, my child was not permitted? I mean, I understand right now when there was lunch and that we want to ensure the contact tracing, so we want kids to sit at the same tables. But what I was trying, what I'm trying to understand, why at LMS, my child on the first day, when they came to the cafeteria, was not allowed to pick friends to sit at the table with? Basically, they all came in and the seats were assigned, so knowing that they have such limited opportunities to socialize, and they have very restricted access to one to each other, lunch even, it's very important to them to socialize and catch up with friends that they care more. So when they arrive at the cafeteria, the school doesn't land at seats, and they have no choice whatsoever of selecting who they want to sit next to. Not that they don't like the other friends, but it's important for them to sit next to friends that they want to catch up with. So I would like to understand why LMS of all schools had such restriction on choice of the lunch parties. It seems silly.
Right. Unfortunately, I can't answer that. I'm not sure Mary can, but I believe that is decided by the principal.
I'm not sure. That's what I do not know, because basically at LMS --
No, so you need to contact the principal of your school.
When I ask any questions from the principal office, they tell me that they really don't make those decisions, that those decisions are made for them.
So.
I mean, so this is why I figured maybe I should ask that.
Ask them about that.
Yeah, I don't know.
Now, these, those are decisions that are made, you know, within each school, so may have been made by --
I can make, as you give this simple answer, so because of contact tracing, and we have to know where everybody is, when children are in school, in their classrooms, the teacher has assigned seats, so if somebody has to quarantine, we know who's been within the area of that child, so the same holds for lunch.
I understand that, but on the first day, when there is really no assigned seating, you would hope that they can actually select their table and friends to sit with, and then, once that's selected for contact tracing, you basically fix to your seat, similar to what we have at high school, right? Where they have, you know, they have to always sit at the same place, and, you know, you verify whether you sit at the same. I understand that, but on the first day, they had no choice of selecting who they can sit with, and that really is strange to me.
Well, I can speak for the high school, there's cameras in there, and the children know who they're sitting with, and they can report that fact, younger children sometimes forget who they sat with, and it's not as reliable without cameras to verify who was sitting at the table at that time. That's why there were assigned seats.
Thank you. I'm sorry you can't give you a better answer. So any other comments? Doesn't look like it. I'm going to move on then to the action agenda. Can I get a motion to approve action items 1.0 to 4.2?
We should move. Second.
All in favor? Oh, I'm sorry, we need a roll call.
Roll call, Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Speck?
Yes.
Ms. Fenswellis?
Yes.
Mr. Torrey?
Yes.
Mr. Todd?
Yes.
Dr. E. Bear?
Yes.
Ms. Burris?
Yes. So I need to let you know, we are going to go into executive session afterwards. We will have, we won't have any more action, but we will be discussing suggestions for district goals and discuss also the board self-evaluation. So there is nothing that, you should feel that you have to come back to, all of these things are something worth in progress, so we'll still be discussing them later as well. But if, hopefully, we won't be longer than, I'm hoping 40 minutes, but, you know, I don't want you to feel like you have to --
20?
So can I get a motion to go? All right, second. I guess we got a second to come past it. All in favor?
Let's have a round of applause.